Rise.
My Lords, when we adjourned, I was about to go through briefly those eight points. But you did ask the parties how to think about remedy. Would you rather the suggested remedy be handed up at this stage or at the close of submissions?
Whatever is going to be best. I don't want to spend any...
Try and carry on, try and press on.
I would press on and perhaps we can look at this at the end when you come to reply.
Right. My Lords, the first point was simply this, and it won't take me long to develop at all, that whenever it is decided to uplift one council's housing requirement to accommodate unmet needs of another in the same housing market area, the power maker must make some assessment at least of the OAN of both councils, and that's an indispensable part of the exercise. We've set the reasoning out, albeit briefly again, in paragraph four D to F of our skeleton. But essentially, the point is this: the final housing requirement of such a recipient authority will be determined by two factors in particular. Firstly, the assessment of its own OAN, i.e. that which is to be uplifted, and secondly, by an assessment of the under-providing authority's unmet needs. And those unmet needs amount to the extent to which its housing requirement is below its own OAN. And so it necessarily means that one has to address the OAN of that under-providing authority as well. And for that reason, we do say, and I endorse in terms of these submissions, my learned friend on this, we do say that Inspector Paul Erd in law, in footnote seven, but when he said that calculating Woking's OAN was outside the scope of his examination, it was, for the reason I've just identified, inherent to it. And we say that was an error of law, from which various other errors of law flow.
He couldn't use a met assess the unmet housing need without assessing what the objectively assessed need was.
Indeed. And we accept, of course, that there are certain pragmatic parameters to that, but that is an exercise he has to undertake. Indeed, he did, in some respects, undertake it because he adopted a figure for its OAN, albeit, we say erroneously, for reasons I'll come on to. The second point is simply this, now again, I can take it quickly because my lordships will be aware of the law, and I don't need to go in detail of it, but we do know that when an inspector is assessing OAN for the purposes of determining a planning appeal rather than plan making, that inspector has to grapple with real numbers. And it's been decided in a number of cases. It was decided by this court in Jelston, that's Authority Number 19, and by my Lord, Lord Justice Limbrom at paragraph 25, where it was stated that such an inspector is clearly expected to establish at least to a reasonable level of accuracy and reliability, a level of housing need that represents the full OAN. And my Lord, Lord Justice Limbrom went on in that paragraph to explain that in so doing, that inspector must understand and apply the planning practice guidance correctly, and I'll come on to that shortly. That judgment was reaffirmed again by this court in the Hallam case, that's Authority 18, again by my Lord, Lord Justice Limbrom, this time at paragraph 52. And this, I think, is the passage that the Lord had in mind before lunch. The decision-maker, doing the best he can with the material before him, and I'll come on to that when we come to Tameside, will normally have to identify at least the broad magnitude of any shortfall in the supply of housing land. And so we know that even for a section 78 appeal, the inspector has to grapple with real numbers. The third point is this, is that that's so for a section 78 appeal when one's deciding a planning application at inquiry, even though that inspector is less able to assess housing needs than an inspector conducting an examination into a local plan, and even though it's more important that the better-placed examining inspector does so as accurately as possible. And that too has been decided in a number of cases, including by this court. And I can take you briefly through the authorities, because I know you'll be familiar with them. It was a point expressly made in the case of Huntsdon, that that's Authority Number Nine, at paragraph 26 by Sir David Keane, tremendously experienced planning lawyer going out of the bar.
He wants us to look at any of them.
I could give you the paragraph numbers, and I'll re-commentate if you do want me to take it in my camera. It's just brief comments.
All right, okay.
Paragraph 26, he said this: "I accept Mr Stinchcombe QC's submissions that it's not for an inspector on a section 78 appeal to seek to carry out some sort of local plan process as part of determining the appeal." And then he went on: "An inspector in that situation is not in a position to carry out such an exercise in a proper fashion, since it's impossible for any rounded assessment similar to the local plan process to be done. That process is an elaborate one involving many parties not present or involved in the section 78 appeal." So you have to grapple with the numbers even in section 78, but you're in a better position at a local plan examination. That point was likewise made later by the late Mr Justice Gilbert in the case of Dartford, that's Authority 14, where he said that the requirement to look at census data projections, household formation rates, average household size, migration patterns, economic performance, vacancy, et cetera, is truly a matter for the development plan process. So we know that it's much more the subject matter of a local plan examination than for a section 78 appeal, but even in section 78, you have to grapple with the numbers as best you can.
Did you say paragraph 18?
That's paragraph 45.
45, sorry.
Paragraph 45. When you look at what would otherwise have to be done, you'd have to look at census data projections, household formation, average household size, migration, economic performance, vacancy, all sorts of things, truly a matter for the development plan process. And it's a point likewise made by Mrs Justice Lang in Shropshire, that's Authority 15, and that's at paragraph 27, when she confirmed, and this is a passage I think you've been taken to already, she confirmed that a more detailed, a more detailed analysis of housing needs and supply was appropriate at development plan inquiry, then at a planning appeal. And then she went on to say, one of the reasons of passage that I discussed with my Lord, Lord Justice Limbrom, because an authoritative assessment is being made which binds the council in other cases, by which she simply meant, we're in a plan-led system, and so the housing requirement in a local plan clearly matters enormously because it has profound implications for the decision-making process on future applications. So that's my third point. If you have to grapple with the numbers on OAN, even on a section 78 appeal, it's even more important that you do so with some degree of accuracy when you're plan making. That's the third point. The fourth point is this: yes, assessing OAN is an inexact science. That was helped by my Lord, Lord Justice Limbrom in Jelston at paragraph 25. It's expressly stated in the PPG. But it is nonetheless a science, and there are some parts of it which are exact. And in my respectful submission, they must assume, for the reasonable decision-maker, increased importance for that very reason, given the other uncertainties. And remembering that the interpretation and application of the PPG is a legal requirement here, both as decided in paragraph 25 of Jelston, and because the interpretation of policy is always a matter of law, test ground and D, the PPG told us what the starting point should be. It's the up-to-date, demographically-led population and household projections published by the government. That's in paragraph 15 of the then applicable PPG, which is in your authorities' bundle at tab 20. And we know from paragraph 17 of the same PPG that any decision not to use the latest DCLG projections as the starting point must be clearly explained and justified on the basis of established sources of robust evidence. So that's the fourth point. As a matter of interpretation and application of policy within this inexact science, that's the starting point unless you've got very good evidence-based reason for starting somewhere else. The fifth point is this, and this actually comes to a straightforward point of public law, not to the minutiae or detail of planning law in particular, because this inspector did correctly use the up-to-date projections when assessing Waverley's OAN, its objectively assessed needs, but unknowingly and wrongly used out-of-date projections when assessing Woking's unmet needs. That was inconsistent. Inconsistency is a species of irrationality. It was inconsistent within the same reports and in the same housing market area. For Waverley, the inspector reduced the starting point by 115 115 dwellings per annum for each of the 19 years of the planned period, and he did so at paragraph 19 of his report, because he accepted Powell's argument that you had to use the up-to-date projections. He said that reduction was meaningfully different. And then he didn't reduce the starting point for Woking. And that meant he inflated the starting point by 44 dwellings per annum for each year. For your note, that's clear from paragraph 38 of Mr Parrot's witness statement, and you'll find that at tab eight of the bundle, page 322.
Paragraph 38.
Paragraph 38. So it's 44 dwellings per annum, should have been reduced, the starting point wasn't. Over 14 years, that's 616 dwellings. So I just want you to bear in mind, 616 already. And nowhere, nowhere do we find any explanation, any rational explanation, of why we are inconsistently using the correct starting point for one part of this assessment and an incorrect and wrong and out-of-date starting point for the other.
Just pausing on that point. You say, you corrected yourself slightly by saying, "Nowhere find any rational explanation" for that. Is that because you accept that there is some explanation, but you say it's irrational?
Because I do say it's irrational.
Should we just look at it, because we haven't actually done that?
It's in paragraph 26 to 29 of the report. And in particular, it's paragraph 29.
Page SB 11, yes?
Yep. And it's paragraph 29 of the inspector's report. That said, if you see in that, my lord?
Thank you, yes.
That said, Waverley should not be expected to accommodate the full amount of Woking's unmet need indicated by the Smaugh figures. The household projections for Woking were lower than those on which the Smaugh were based, so he knew that they were lower. And although the adjustment was less significant in percentage and numerical terms at Waverley, the figures suggest the scale of underprovision could be less than 225. Also possible, it goes on, that may be able to deliver more housing than envisaged because there's still a running shortfall at the start of the plan, was ahead of the course structure requirement, that's the AMR stuff. Moreover, Guildford's going through the plan making process, and there might be ability to meet needs there. It would therefore be appropriate and reasonable for Waverley to accommodate half of the figure for unmet need identified through the Smaugh process. And just pausing there, he allocates for those reasons half of the unmet need. That's a division of the housing market authority that remains into the two referred to authorities of Waverley and Guildford. But the figure that he's allocating and having is a wrong calculation, and there is no nexus between any of those uncertainties and the reduction that he's made. All he's done, rather than do what he could and should have done, and we'll come on to this when we look at Tameside, which is to start from the same certain starting point and then look on the best available evidence as to what the actual supply was and therefore what the correct basis for an under-provision and unmet needs was, rather, he calculates something that is known to be wrong and then purports to reflect the uncertainties by simply dividing the wrong figure between the two remaining authorities but subject to subsequent examination in Guildford. And we say that's irrational.
Well, you say it starts with the wrong figure.
Yes.
Where do you say, if anywhere, is his explanation for starting with that particular figure?
No explanation at all. There is no reason, no reason given.
Right, so it's not merely no rational explanation, it's no explanation?
No explanation for that. And bearing in mind the importance of consistency in decision-making, not just in planning but as a matter of straightforward public law, but certainly in planning, we say that of itself, of itself is manifestly an error of law. And it sounds in a different starting point of some 616 dwellings.
Can you just pause for a second?
Yes, of course.
Sorry if I'm being slow. Might it be said or not, but in the second sentence of 29, he's acknowledging the force of the point that the 2014 household projections were lower than those on which the Smaugh was based. So he's putting that into the analysis.
It could be said that he's...
I'm sorry, forgive me.
Yep.
You say it was wrong to do it, but he's consciously taking on board the fact that the 2014 projections were lower.
Well, insofar as he's taken into account material consideration, what he's actually doing is knowingly starting from the wrong starting point. That's what he's actually doing. He knows that they're lower, but rather than do what he did in respect of Waverley and reduce the starting point accordingly, he simply says, "I know they're wrong."
Well, yes, but, well, I mean, they're wrong in the sense that there's more up-to-date information which produces a different figure.
And wrong in this regard as well, that paragraph 15 and paragraph 17 of the PPG tells us that we have to start from that starting point unless there is compelling and robust local evidence that requires you to do otherwise. And he started from the correct starting point when assessing one authority's needs, and then knowingly starts from the wrong starting point when assessing the others. And we say that is not rational. It doesn't apply properly to PPG, which is a Jelston error of law, paragraph 25, and it means that he's reached an inconsistent decision, which is wrong in law as a matter of principle, and that's North Wilshire and others.
Well... No, I mean, I have to say that I, I mean, this doesn't necessarily meet all your criticisms, but I had rather read the second half of this paragraph as a sort of rough-and-ready attempt to calculate Woking's OAN.
Well, my lord, I can readily see why you would have thought that, but when we actually go through the arithmetic, you'll see he didn't do that at all. What he actually did, what he actually, was very straightforward, and we put it in the footnotes of our submissions, what he actually did was subtract a figure which was the housing requirement from the revoked structure plan essentially, from the wrong starting point, multiply that by 14, because that's what he thought was the unmet needs over the lifespan of a 14-year plan, and then divide it by two and give that resulting house figure to Waverley. So what he did was an arithmetic exercise that was wrong. That's what he did. And there is no nexus between any of the uncertainties and that wrong mathematical exercise. What would have been a correct mathematical exercise was simply to start from the right starting point and then not look at a revoked requirement figure as a proxy for supplier, but look at the AMRs. That's all he had to do. That's not an onerous burden in an inquisitorial process, and we'll come on to the Tameside duty in a while.
Well, for my part, I wonder whether there's a slightly different reading of paragraph 29. And this is merely an impression and not a crystallized view, but if you go over the page... First full sentence on the page: "Therefore be appropriate and reasonable for Waverley to accommodate half of the figure for unmet need." And certainly on a reading of the whole paragraph, that isn't merely splitting it down the middle as between Waverley and Guildford. It's to take account of everything that's gone before, the "therefore" is predicated on all the points acknowledged in the first part of the paragraph. So he's not simply saying, "Well, I'm just going to halve it as between Guildford and Waverley, I'm bearing in mind that the 2014 household projections are lower," et cetera.
Well, my lord, I accept that the inspector was trying to reflect some of these uncertainties in the exercise that he undertook.
Is my reading of that provisional reading?
I understand, that is...
Is that a proper reading?
That is a reading of it. But the flaw in it is that the exercise that he was undertaking was itself fundamentally flawed exercise. It's not a rational way of approaching the problem with which he was faced.
Right, you say that the whole assessment is mistaken from the beginning because he should have started with the up-to-date figures and worked out what the OAN was.
Once he knew that the starting point was different, and once he knew that the AMRs indicated a different supply to the figure he took into account, rather than start with the wrong information, the rubbish in, he should have corrected that, because if you have rubbish in, you're going to have rubbish out. And you don't escape from that fundamental problem by simply dividing half of the wrong figure that you've calculated and saying, "That's enough, it's not enough." It shows a fundamental misunderstanding and misapplication of paragraphs 15 and 17 of the PPG when that is a matter of law. It shows a fundamental inconsistency between the treatment of Woking and Waverley, and that too is a matter of law. And in some respects, reflecting the judgment of Sir David Keane in Huntsdon, one has a sympathy with the inspector, because just in Huntsdon, nobody had addressed the point there raised. Nobody has before had the opportunity to address this point, and he was at least trying to address, "What do you do about meeting the unmet needs of another authority when there are uncertainties?" It just so happens that this is now an opportunity for this court to tell inspectors what they have to do. And what they have to do is start from the same inconsistent starting point, and they have to ask the relevant question to get the up-to-date information. And that's not an onerous burden, especially when the ramifications in real terms and on the ground, especially in constrained areas, can be very, very pronounced. Unless I can help you further on that point, I wonder if I can go on to my fifth point, which is on the supply.
You've done the fifth point, I think.
I was coming on to, I hope, the fifth point, which is the supply, and you should have looked at the AMRs.
I've written five down.
Oh.
Maybe I shouldn't have done.
Well, that may have been me reading out the wrong ones. But anyway, I've said that he got the wrong starting point. I now say that he deducted from that wrong starting point the wrong and inflated starting point, the wrong amount for supply. And the reason for this is that he didn't actually ask what the actual supply was, looking at real figures for housing delivery, looking at Woking's annual monitoring reports, all of which he was aware. Rather, what he did was use the housing requirement that's derived from the revoked southeast plan as a proxy for supply. But that's a figure that tells you nothing about what actual supply as opposed to what planned supply was, and the information as to what actual supply is readily available. And he knew it was readily available because he referred to it in paragraph 29 of his report. And it's a point I made before lunch, the use of that figure as a proxy for housing needs was expressly rejected in section 78 appeal by this court in Huntsdon. And we say, more emphatically so, should it be rejected when used as a proxy for housing supply in a plan-making context, because it has no real relevance to actual housing and supply, and in a plan-making context, it's more important that we are as accurate as possible. And I can make this point fairly shortly, I think, because the numbers are before you. We've already identified 616 dwellings error by reference to the wrong starting point. As my learned friend took you to today, looking at just the last five years of the AMRs, there's a further 816 dwellings. So the numbers are clocking up, we're now at over 1,400 potential erroneous dwelling calculations. And we also make this point, and again, my learned friend didn't take you to it, but it's in our skeletons, where I touched on it briefly, that both of the other authorities in the HMA had made it clear immaterial before the inspector that they thought that Woking's supply was actually potentially a thousand higher in any event, or its capacity for supply by reference to Marty's Lane. And you'll find for your note, it's in paragraph 20C of our skeleton and in tab seven of the bundle, that is 307, 308, paragraph 20 bracket C of our skeleton and tab seven, 307, 308 of the bundle. But the point is this: Woking were looking at replacing some of its allocations with other allocations, and both Guildford and Waverley said to them, "Well, look, don't replace them, add them on, that's a thousand dwellings." And all I say in that regard is that being a principal issue before the inspector, the inspector should have grappled with it, but he didn't grapple with it because he didn't think it was within the scope of his examination. And so just look at those figures alone, we have a potential inflation of its needs by 616 dwellings, we have what looks like an underestimation of supply by 816 dwellings, then we have no grappling with another thousand dwellings, so we're looking at a total of over 2,400 dwellings by those three factors alone. Those are significant numbers, and especially, especially in the context of a environmentally constrained borough, which is already having to meet not just its own housing needs, but 25% on top by reason of issues of affordability.
Sorry, if I'm being lazy, you tell me, but paragraph 20, 20 sub-paragraph C, page 13 of your skeleton encapsulates these points. We haven't got all the numbers that you've just given us there.
What we are simply referring you there to, and we've given the page references, we're simply referring you there to, are the representations made by Waverley and Guildford, which were before the inspector, whereby they indicated that they thought there was a potential additional supply in Woking of a thousand dwellings by reference to identified sites which they're proposing to take out of a local plan and replace, and the point being made, we don't have to take it and replace, you can add them on. That's the only point.
Yeah, so the thrust of the point you've just given us is 20 sub-paragraph C.
Indeed, indeed. And so what we indicate by reference to both sides of this assessment, looking at what its needs are and what its potential supply is, that the inspector got the needs wrong by reference just to the starting point, plain error, 616, supply wrong by not looking at the actual supply, 816. not looking at the actual supply, eight one six, and potentially supply wrong again by not looking at material before him, one thousand, that's two thousand four hundred and thirty-two, by reference of those factors alone, all in a heavily constrained area. And this is the crux of the appeal, my next point, the seventh point, sixth point, I think it is, that it's no answer that Inspector Bore didn't have the full information before him to enable him to undertake an exact calculation of Woking's OAN or its unmet needs. Firstly, the latest projections were known to him, and they were certain, and a correct starting point, they were readily available. Secondly, so were Woking's AMRs, he referred to them, there was nothing to prevent him from inviting the production of that information and an explanation, and likewise, in regards to Martis Lane. But more importantly, he was under a legal duty to do so by reference to Tameside. He needed to acquaint himself with the information necessary to answer correctly the question before him, which was what is the best assessment of Woking's unmet housing needs? And I repeat a point I made to my Lord, Lord Justice Limblon before lunch, as we say in paragraph thirty-three of our skeleton, we do submit that the local plan examination is a paradigm example of public decision-making where Tameside has real and meaningful engagement and application. And that's because the local plan examination is based on a structured discussion which the examining inspector leads. That examining inspector reads the submissions, the consultation responses, and identifies and asks the questions which he needs to have the information on correctly to advise on that local plan, and suggests the modifications which will make it sound. He's an inquisitorial decision-maker. And the situation may well...
Don't want to interrupt you, my apologies for this, but in the field in which I more often sit, that is a turn of art.
Okay.
Do you really mean it to be that his word on the issue identification and the garnering of evidence is final, or do you mean it to be investigative?
Investigative, investigative. I'm talking in a planning context only, my lord. And the point I'm seeking to make is simply this, that true it is that an adversarial planning inquiry, where you're producing your own evidence and you're cross-examining witnesses, then there may be a lesser responsibility on an inspector. But where the inspector is vested by statute and regulation with the responsibility and the powers to conduct a structured discussion and phrase the questions upon which he or she wants the answers and the information, then we say that the Tameside duty is properly engaged. And then finally, my last point, and repeating a point I made before lunch and also just now in answer to the questions of my Lord, Lord Justice Limblon, we say that that error, that series of errors, isn't corrected by simply saying, well, I know these figures are wrong, so I'm only going to give half of the wrong figure to Waverley. That doesn't correct the errors. And so for all of those reasons, we do submit that Inspector Bore erred in law. He wrongly quantified and asserted housing shortfall on an inconsistent basis to that used in relation to Waverley. He wrongly did so without any analysis of up-to-date evidence when the MPPF and PPG required him to have regard to up-to-date evidence. He failed properly to apply and interpret the MPPF or the PPG. That resorted in failures to reach a rational decision on relevant grounds and to have, and to give any proper adequate reason for deciding as he did. Each of those amounts to an error of law, and not one was corrected by the council. And we'll come to remedy later if need be, but we do simply say this, that given those material errors, serial errors of law, this should be remitted back so the housing requirement can be correctly calculated, especially given the environmental constraints in Waverley, because it simply cannot be right for such an environmentally constrained borough to have imposed upon it a requirement which is wrongly calculated and not needed. Unless I can help you further, those are submissions on behalf of power.
No, thank you, my lord. There is just one point of clarification, that's to structure your eight points straddle all the submissions you've set out more fully in your skeleton argument. The way that you present your argument to us, I think, is in a more holistic way. No criticism of either you or Mr Westaway, Mr Westaway has, I think, five heading, main headings, you put the thing in a more rounded...
Well, I'm trying to walk you through a route, an analytical route, and identify with some rigor and in terms of the public legal language where the argument goes.
Yeah, so it's an artificial exercise to try to compartmentalise your eight points into specific headings, yes.
It's a narrative, legal narrative.
Yeah, fine.
I'm glad.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, my lord. Can I deal, first of all, with the judgment below, recognising the court will be well familiar with it, but it is the judgment that is subject to this appeal, then to spend some time with the inspector's report, after that to make six discrete points that I hope I can take relatively shortly. As was indicated earlier on during the Court of Argument, the appellants do not have any significant criticism at least of the way the learned judge set out the factual background to this matter. So can I invite my lord's attention to that, first of all? And the background starts at page AB one oh three, paragraph six and the following. And just to pick up on really half a dozen or so points that I say are important to the local authorities' defence of this appeal. And so if my lord to have that, first of all, at paragraph ten, my Lord, Lord Justice Ryder noted earlier, of course, the three authorities in this housing market area were at different points of the development plan process, and that will often be the way, and it's something that was remarked upon by the judge. Then at paragraph twelve, the judge took up the point that there are different methods for determining the objectively assessed need in a particular area, and the judge, in a way that is not criticised by anyone here, later set out the relevant passages of the MPPF and indeed of the PPG. Paragraph twelve continues, that the local planning authority will have to exercise its own planning judgement, and I don't trespass over the cases that were earlier referred to in submissions, which make it clear that the appellants accept that is the position in relation to the judgements that this inspector had to address his mind to, and in particular the planning judgement as to how to calculate the objectively assessed need. And Mr Parrott, the planning policy manager, sets out a table, and my lords had an opportunity to look at those respective tables, because they are perhaps illuminating on the point that follows, but the learned judge drew attention to the fact in paragraph twelve that importantly, the Woking objectively assessed need was based to a significant degree on predictions as to employment growth in and around Woking, and not simply on the household projection figures, and that was a clear contrast with Waverley. And in fact, just as a matter of record, and you can see this from Mr Parrott's witness evidence, of the three authorities within the housing market area, Waverley's was the only one that ended up being demographically led, both Guildford and Woking ended up being employment-led. And just to fast forward through the judgment to see where this point is picked up, my lords go to page AB one one eight, paragraph fifty-four. The point is made, but I'll just give my lords a moment to refresh your minds in relation to that, but it outlines the kinds of additional investigations that would have been required before any meaningful recalculation could have been made of the Woking AOM, bearing in mind that it was an employment-derived figure.
Is your point there that that would not just be disproportionate?
Exactly, yes. There's nothing that requires it as a matter of law, so my headline point of this is that bearing in mind the circumstances in which this inspector found himself, there was no obligation as a matter of law to attempt to assess again the OAN for Woking based on the employment-led projections, because that would have required significant additional work. And one of the questions that the court has not heard an answer to today is, well, who would have been doing that work? And we see as we go through that, of course, Woking weren't interested in doing that work, my lords will see that as we progress, because they had their core strategy in place, and their position made very clear to the Waverley examiner was, we're sticking with our core strategy, we are taking forward additional development plan documents, namely our site allocations. My lord may well appreciate, site allocations quite often come at a later stage after the strategic framework has been set out, and indeed their development management. So that was from start to finish of our examination, the way that Woking were proposing to address their local plan-making. So bearing all of that in mind, and of course, our inspector knew this, and we'll see the level of detail that he knew it in, because he had the Woking inspector's report before him, which you also have, and which he referred to in terms in the footnote, so it's clear that he was cognizant of that report, and that has some interesting features when we come on to what Woking was and wasn't able to provide. But then going back to paragraph twelve of the judgment, and I will invite my lords to look briefly at the tables that Mr Parrott provided, so if we keep open AB one oh four and turn to the supplementary bundle, Mr Parrott's evidence is behind tab eight. And bearing in mind some of the observations that were made about timing, and there was perhaps implicit suggestion that the process that the inspector adopted might not have been fair indeed with this point, or at least that the participants to the examination were surprised in a way that deprived them and deprived the examiner of considering these issues properly. I'll just invite my lords to reflect on the detail of what Mr Parrott has set out, which is also summarised in the judgment, about how early on in fact these matters were taken up. And all of the main participants who were interested in these issues had a full opportunity to make representations about them, and many did, some didn't, but many did. And so as we go through Mr Parrott's evidence, we see, just so my lords can note and recall where it is, on SB three one seven, paragraph twenty-six, an overview of the relative environmental constraints, my lords have the maps that Mr Parrott also exhibited to his witness evidence. And then we have three tables as we make our way through, and the first of the tables is on page eight five, sorry, comes with having three sets of numbering.
One nine.
Three one nine, I'm grateful, just to my lord, but the heading, of course, is on three one eight. So this is the table dealing with Waverley's OAN in the West Sussex Schmar. And for present purposes, my lords will see that we have household projections, Waverley being demographically led, then we have a small upward adjustment in relation to the vacancy rate, after that, employment growth has no material impact in relation to Waverley, the figure stays at four nine three, affordable housing need doesn't either, there's a small affordability uplift which, my lords, will have picked up the inspector made significantly greater, and then London migration, and then there are two similar tables dealing with the position, first of all, in relation to Waverley's local plan based on the inspector's conclusions, and that's on three two one. And so one sees, again, employment growth is at a different part of that table, but it has no impact. The inspector, when we go through his reasoning, dealt with the order of the uplifts in a slightly different way, but ultimately he concluded there was no need to make an uplift based on employment growth. And then we see by way of what I say is stark contrast, the position in relation to Woking's OAN, again in the West Surrey Schmar, twenty fifteen, on page three two three. And so there, my lords, see household projections, so starting with the demographics, three three one, ten for the vacancy rate, and then up to four seven one, and in fact, it was the figure of four seven one that was required in terms of growth so that there could be enough houses for the jobs that Woking wished to provide for. And so in this case, the whole of the four seven one was the basis for that part of the OAN calculation which is then taken forward. So as the judge remarked, and as Mr Parrott set out, a significantly different position as between Waverley and Woking, and that's why, superficially attractive as it is, one can't pick up Mr Stinchcombe's tables and say, well, just changing the household projections reduces your annual need by forty-four, it simply doesn't follow on the basis of the analysis that was being used within the Schmar. And what we also see from Mr Parrott's witness evidence just while we're here, he explains at paragraphs thirty-six through to thirty-nine, four essential reasons why it would not have been an appropriate exercise of power for the inspector to have undertaken this task, but that goes far further than I need to do. All I need to be able to say is that in these particular circumstances, there was no legal obligation on the inspector to conduct these particular inquiries. And so...
So what do you say his obligation was then? I mean, you've fairly pointed out to the differing accounts of what allowances had to be made for these various factors, and we know that there were discrepancies, if you like, all the way up through the calculation, beginning with the difference between the two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen figures, but... But what's the obligation that you say that the planning guidance imposes on an inspector in these circumstances?
Yes, so taking it at the highest level, if I may, first of all, before descending to the more specific circumstances, the inspector is appointed to determine the soundness of the plan, applying the four tests in paragraph one hundred and eighty-two of the MPPF, which you have. Amongst those is the obligation for the plan to be positively prepared, which has the obligation to meet the unmet needs of neighbours so far as it's reasonable to do so. And that's at the highest level. And what the inspector conducting the examination does is consider the objections to the plan, and he will do that with the assistance of neighbouring authorities, who may be statutory consultees, may have the duty to cooperate in law, but it wouldn't be right to be under the impression that a local plan examination is some broader inquisitorial process where anyone who is interested in the merit or demerit of the local plan can appear, it is simply those who object to the plan and want to suggest that it need, either that it can't be made sound, or that if it can be made sound, certain changes need to be made to policy wording or to the text of the plan. So that's the essential basis on which the examination takes place. Coming down to the more specific level of what was required of the inspector here, it was to make an overall judgment on the three main issues that he expressly identified towards the start of his report, and one of those was in relation to the housing needs of the area. So that was the ultimate question that he had to answer, and the issue of the unmet need arising from Woking was one constituent part of that.
You say the housing needs for the area, now, this was a point Mr Westaway was on earlier on, what does that mean where you've got a three-authority HMA?
Yes, well, the obligation is for the local authorities in total to meet the housing needs across the HMA, and so that's why paragraph one eight two of the MPPF contains a requirement that where there are issues of unmet need, it is for the other... that where there are issues of unmet need, it is for the other authorities in the HMA, in this case, Waverley and Guildford, to consider, and if they don't, for the inspector to consider, the extent to which they might make a contribution to those unmet needs. And that is precisely what the inspector was doing in this case when we get to the relevant sections of his report.
But sorry, to go back to my lord's question, if I may. What did this inspector have to do in this process by way of honouring, if you like, the requirement in the MPPF? So far as the assessment of OAN was concerned?
Yes.
It may be being suggested, I think it is being suggested, that he was under some obligation to confront the OAN borough by borough within the HMA.
That's the logical implication of what's being said. I say that's wrong.
Right. So how do you formulate it?
The inspector was obliged to consider, as he did under main issue one, and this is SB 8, whether the plan makes adequate provision for new housing.
That's paragraph 182.
That's part of the application of 182, yes, my lord. And so because I say that the inspector's report is a model, it may be helpful just to pick the report up and see how he followed this exercise through. So if we look at page SB 8, he identifies three main issues for consideration. And of course, the framework for the examination and the questions that required to be answered were up to him to determine, applying correctly the guidance as to what constitutes a sound plan. And so we see the assessment of sound starts at paragraph 17 on SB 8. And he identifies three particular issues that he considers need to be addressed. First is whether the plan makes adequate provision for new housing. And in the first subheading of that, of course, what he does do is calculate with arithmetical precision and exactitude, the OAN in relation to Waverley, which is an area where applying the authorities he had and could be expected to have relatively complete information, allowing him to come to clear conclusions. And if one takes a moment to consider the level of detail and analysis that is contained in these following passages in calculating the AON, perhaps it becomes more readily apparent why it is that it can't be an obligation of law for one local planning authority within an HMA. As my lord knows, there are only three authorities here, but there are other HMAs across the country where there are six, seven, eight authorities. So one needs to bear that sort of thing in mind. One also needs to bear in mind that, of course, there can be circumstances where one local planning authority is a member of more than one HMA. So again, there are examples where authorities are members of three or four HMAs. So if this obligation exists as a matter of law, it's capable, contrary to what's been said on behalf of the appellant, of generating some extraordinarily onerous requirements on behalf of local planning authorities, entirely inconsistent with the principal overarching theme about evidence collation for local plan examinations, which is that it should be proportionate. And we see that.
So not an obligation as a matter of law?
No.
To assess the OAN for another borough within the same HMA?
Yes. And as I submit, that can be supported by looking at the detail of the analysis. And to be fair to this inspector, the way that where the figures were open to him and available, he really did grapple with them. I would suggest that this is a very detailed analysis of the OAN in relation to Waverley. And one can see that by reference, amongst other things, to the footnote. And so, for example, just to pick up on one point, he accepted in relation to Waverley, if we look at footnote one, that the 396 figure that was available there was the best starting point for the OAN calculation. He referred to various material, which of course is not before my lords. I make no criticism of anyone. But it's readily appreciated that there were a range of views, as Mr Parrott suggested before the examiner, which covered a wide range of different propositions. And so we can see the...
Can I just chart that through?
Certainly.
And again, bearing in mind that I come to this with a different perspective. If the obligation is that which you have described in respect of Waverley and you say, have a look at paragraphs 18 onwards of the report, there it is in detail. Then so far as its subsequent impact upon Woking is concerned, what is Woking's end remedy when they get to the point that this becomes, if I can put it in colloquial terms, a nonsense?
Yes. Well, at least two things happen. And more concretely now than would have been the case when this examination was taking place. When this examination was taking place, it was government guidance, but not a regulatory requirement, that local plan should be reviewed every five years. That is now a regulatory requirement. So what might well have been happening is that Woking might have decided to review their core strategy if they thought, in their own wisdom, there was justification for doing that. As it happens, we know from the material that's before this court that Woking have not taken that approach. They have decided to stick with their core strategy and develop the other development plan documents under that. That's a decision for them. As my lord, Lord Justice Limblon pointed out earlier, of course, none of these plans are interpreted in a vacuum. They're all interpreted normally in the course of section 78 appeals dealing, or decisions dealing with individual planning applications. And so as was pointed out earlier, if it turns out that there are a whole glut of sites on brownfield land within Woking to the surprise of most, certainly of the Woking inspector, and I'll take you to that passage, then those are factors that could be taken into account in any section 78 appeal.
So it becomes a section 78 matter, in simple terms?
Exactly. So when we see all of the analysis that takes place up until the conclusion on the OAN, that gives an indication of the level of detail that is required before one can come to a robust conclusion in relation to the OAN for the authority who has submitted the plan. And just to make the point, Mr Parrott's point about the level of analysis that would have been required, firstly, to look at the Woking AON on any basis, but secondly, because it was based on employment forecasting, we can pick up the bundle of authorities and refer to the Dartford case at tab 14. And my learned friend, Mr Stinchcombe, took you to this passage on page 17 of the report. Paragraph 45. And so if there were to be a full analysis of the OAN for Woking and/or Guildford, because of course Guildford were also going to receive on the inspector's provisional views, at least some housing from Woking. So if one were to do a complete picture, then there's a need to look at Guildford as well. But all of those things that are identified in paragraph 45 would need to be taken into consideration. Census data and projections, household formation rates, average household size, migration patterns, economic performance, vacancy rates, site assessment. And that's an important part of this exercise, because the appellant's case doesn't stop with the proposition that it was a requirement of law for the inspector to look at the OAN, at least in Woking. It carries on to say that that wouldn't have been enough either. There's also a need to look at the supply side, again, as a matter of law. And so, as my lords will appreciate, the AMR is one way of doing that exercise. But if one wanted to form a complete view as to what might be around in the future, rather than the existing completions that are recorded in the AMR, then you start to look at exercises like site availability. And so the suggestion is not just, well, you've got to look at the OAN, you've got to look at the other side of the coin as well. And so you've also got to investigate the feasibility of sites coming forward, both in relation to Woking and Guildford. And indeed, the Martyrs Lane site that has been specifically identified by the appellant is a good example of that. So it's a continuation of their argument to say, well, actually, the inspector also ought to have looked at what was potentially in the other side of the coin as well. It wouldn't even be enough to do what I submit is clearly an onerous exercise and a disproportionate exercise in relation to the OAN. And one thing that we do know about what was set out by Mr Justice Gilbar, paragraph 45 of the Dartford case, is that it was adopted by Mrs Justice Lang in the Shropshire case. And again, I think my learned friend gave you the reference to that. But you can see, if you turn to pages 12 and 13 of that case, paragraph 45 again being referred to. So this is a broadly held understanding in experienced planning judges as to what the likely requirements would be to calculate the OAN of any of the other parties to the HMA. And of course, it's absolutely consistent with what the inspector did here in relation to Waverley itself.
Sorry, paragraph 27, was it?
My lord, it's just above paragraph 27, yes. The quotation, I think, is in paragraph 26, starting on page 11. But paragraph 45 of Dartford is on pages 12 and 13.
She is quoting, she's reciting what Mr Justice Gilbar said?
Yes. Just making the observation that it appears, again, without any apparent demur or suggestion that it's inaccurate as to what you ought to do if you're dealing with a particular housing authority in a section 78 appeal.
I mean, you've explained to us, and I think one's... I think it's probably almost common ground that the degree and intensity and specificity of the examination of this material in an exercise such as this can't be as intense as if the inspector was examining Woking's own plan.
Yes.
But, and you've shown us what the range of information and data that the inspector here would have needed to have carried out a comparable exercise as part of this, part of the exercise he was in fact carrying up. But I'm still not, I have to say entirely clear, what you say he should have done. I mean, I understand what you say he wasn't able to do. But I mean, a part, I think, of the government of the complaint against you is that he actually identified, you can see it in paragraph 29, a discrepancy or, if you like, a difference in relation to the household projections, which he knew about.
That's absolutely...
I mean, it's all very well saying, well, you can't be expecting to go rooting about for this or rooting about for that, and people aren't going to be there with that sort of information. But in part, that's not really what this appeal is about. What this appeal is about in part is an argument that he didn't adequately respond to the information which he actually had.
Yes. And I say that he did. I say in the particular circumstances of this case, he had to apply what is bound to be one of the broadest planning judgments that a local plan examiner will come across. And that's the circumstances where there is unmet need emanating from a local authority that is a neighbouring authority. It can't be an obligation, I say, for the Waverley inspector to step into the shoes of the Woking inspector and conduct some sort of quasi-Woking exam. So if that's right, then the question becomes one of planning judgment. What is sufficient to be done in the circumstances?
He's still got to do, I mean, do you just say from the property, he's still got to do, even on your view, even on your submission, he's got to do the best he can. I mean, one wants these things to be surely as accurate as possible.
He doesn't have to do the best he can. What he has to do is behave within the bounds of rationality and provide reasons applying his own judgment. And my lord, it's important because...
You're saying he's got to do, he's got, it's got like the sort of examination candidate, who knows? He's only got to get 40% in order to pass the exam. So all he's got to do is to aim to get 41%.
I would say I'm a fair reading inspector's board's decision. He scores quite a lot more than 40%.
Well, that's why I find that submission slightly odd. I mean, surely he's got to make the best assessment he can on the information that is provided to him.
Yes. But going in his judgment, yes, that's right. But we go back to the essential reason why Mr Stinchcombe and Mr Westaway say that in this case there was not a need to have regard to the 2014 projections as far as Woking were concerned, because it's plain that the inspector did that. He had them in mind and he refers to them. But what it said is that national policy in these circumstances essentially required him to carry out a calculation of the OAN. And that's where there is the difference between us. I say that what Inspector Ball did here in paragraphs 26 through 29 was an eminently lawful, pragmatic way of approaching the situation that he found himself in in circumstances where he knew that the implications of the 2014 figures for Waverley would not necessarily be the same as they would be for Woking for the reasons that I've endeavoured to explain. And that if...
Where do we get the 50% then, the sort of cut it in half in order to get to that conclusion?
Yes, I'll come on to that, if I may, as a matter of planning judgment for the inspector. But if one accepts that he wasn't bound, as a matter of his judgment, to reach the same conclusions that the Woking 2014 figures were going to generate some sort of significant change, then he was entitled to go about this exercise in the way that he did. And it's entirely clear that he wasn't persuaded that the 2014 figures would necessarily make a significant difference in relation to Woking because of the way he expresses himself in paragraphs 26 to 29. So can I run through those paragraphs and take my lords through what I say is apparent from the reasoning? So first of all, at 26, under the subheading meeting unmet housing need in the HMA, the West Surrey HMA also includes Woking-Gilford Borough Councils. The Schmar calculates Woking's OAN to be 517. But Woking's adopted core strategy, 2010 to 2017, so still current in development plan terms, only makes provision for 292 dwellings per annum over its plan period. And so those were two perfectly sensible benchmarks that the inspector, as a matter of planning judgment, was entitled to adopt. He had a development plan which had been through the examination process. And as I say, we have the report. And it decided that the core strategy should make provision for 292 dwellings per annum. And just before I go further, just to illustrate why my learned friend's reliance on the later AMRs, which the examiner plainly had in mind, doesn't take one as far as you might immediately think. If we look at the Woking plan, that's, the report is at tab 7, SB 237. And one can see it's no significant surprise. It follows a similar layout. But then if you turn to page SB 256, and that's the page I want to look at. But if we turn back just to 254, just to see where we are, as it were, in the report, it's matter seven, is the core strategy's approach to housing provision sufficiently justified and consistent with national policy. It refers to the ven iteration of the West Surrey Schmar at paragraph 78 and deals with Guildford. And then at paragraph 81, 80 and 81, my lords, just take a moment to read that and you'll see where the 300 figure comes from. And in particular, the suggestion that this inspector found, having looked at the situation in Woking, that Woking had not been able to consistently exceed 300 dwellings per annum. That's at the end of 81. So that was the conclusion at the end of the examination process. And we see the figure of 292, just to complete the point. Paragraph 83, just going across the page. Identified as being reasonable, provided it's seen as an average minimum and not an absolute target. So the inspector was identifying and using as important, and there can't be any criticism of him for this, the development plan target for a development plan that was still enforced for a good few years going forward. for a good few years going forward, and in circumstances where, as we will see, Woking had decided not to review the plan. And so he knows those things. And then at paragraph twenty-seven, he notes this, the submitted plan makes no provision for Woking's unmet housing need. The MPPF states, local planning authority, should meet subjectively assessed need within their housing market area. Now, pausing there, of course, that's not a complete quote of that passage of the MPPF, but we know that the inspector looked in detail at housing provision in relation to the environmental issues, because he does that, starting on page SB twelve and following in a way that is not now criticised in this court. And so we see in paragraph twenty-seven, he refers to the respective constraints facing the three authorities in ways, again, that are not criticised as being in any way planning judgments that it was not open to him to meet. And so in paragraph twenty-eight, an important point arises, because as we see, the approach that the local authorities were taking, and indeed the approach that CPRE were taking, was to suggest that these issues relating to unmet need could be picked up at a later point in time. To use the colloquial, there was a certain amount of an attempt to kick the can down the road in relation to the issue of unmet need. And to make that point good, if we look very briefly at the representation that Woking made, one-nine-four through to one-nine-six, my lords were taken to this earlier, and it recites the unmet need that Woking plainly is telling the Waverley inspector that it has. So that's Woking's position.
Sorry, one-nine-four?
Yes, it starts at one-nine-four, my lord, and then goes across to one-nine-six. And if you look at the passage that Mr Stinchcombe drew attention to, starting with paragraph one-seven-nine of the MPPF, you'll see a number of references there to unmet need. So that was Woking's position.
Well, by the time the inspector ultimately came to consider this, what was Woking's position as to its own unmet need?
Firstly, that they had unmet need, that they weren't going to be able to meet.
Well, sorry, is this the document?
At the examination.
Is this the document you've just taken us to?
Well, this is the representation that's made on the third of October twenty sixteen.
The third of October sixteen.
Yes.
Was this their last word on the...
Yes, so that continued to be their position.
All the way through the process.
Indeed. And we can see, if we look at what Woking Borough Council's response to the inspector's matters and issues for the examination, that starts at SB two-oh-six and carries on to two-oh-seven.
Right, just a second.
And so if my lord has two-oh-six, we can see that this is the response to the inspector's matters and issues for examination.
Right, date on this is...
It was before the examination, because these were a response to the early questions set out. I can find the date for my lord. But at an earlier stage in the process.
My lord, the same question was asked in the High Court, and I transferred over fifth of May twenty seventeen, which I think may have come from the defendant.
Right, fifth of May seventeen. So this is Woking Borough Council, fifth of May seventeen.
Yes. And so there we have reference to the development plans that Woking had, they had their adopted core strategy, then the site allocations development plan document that they were working on, and development management policies DPD as well. And then, as my lord sees at the foot of that page, Woking Borough Council has an adopted core strategy October twenty-twelve, post-dates the publication of the MPPF, my lords will appreciate the significance of that. It was judged to be in general conformity with the MPPF and found sound. Its requirements are up to date, including its annual housing requirement. So that's the position of Woking as they approached the Waverley exam. And then there are references to the unmet need arising from Woking on the following page, and references to the process of preparing the site allocations DPD. So that was the way that they were approaching things. And then in relation to the issue that's come up about Masters Lane and safeguarded land, on the penultimate paragraph on that page, there's reference to reviewing the green belt boundary, council has also sort of safeguard land within the site allocations DPD to meet future development needs. My lord, Lord Justice Limbleham will appreciate this immediately, safeguarded for a period beyond that period, so after twenty-twenty-seven. And that's what they were suggesting there. And so in response to the floated suggestion by Guildford and Waverley that there would be some other additional substantial reserves of land that Woking could bring forward, Woking themselves say, there is again no ambiguity of the purpose of the safeguarded sites, and as such, there should not be any expectation of them being brought forward to meet unmet need.
Sorry, you're reading from where?
I'm sorry, my lord, penultimate paragraph on page two-oh-seven, towards the bottom of that paragraph, last five lines.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. Got it. Right, so was this the last word on unmet need from Woking?
Yes. Apart from the fact that Woking were represented at the examination, and their message remained the same through the examination, there wasn't a change in any of these critical respects. And so as we go across to page two-oh-eight, we can see again the references to unmet need at the end of the paragraph on that page.
Sorry, where was that?
Sorry, that's just page two-oh-eight.
Where exactly is that?
Last three lines on the first paragraph of that page.
First paragraph?
Yes. It's slightly confusing, because the first two lines are the heading of the document.
Last three lines of that paragraph you want?
Yes, the paragraph starting that the core strategy is reviewed. And then the way that Woking want to approach this, consistent with the statement of common ground that you were taken to earlier, is in the next paragraph, reading from three lines in, the scale of the unmet need within the housing market area will become apparent when the local plans are adopted and housing delivery has been monitored. Woking Borough Council has already worked positively and constructively with Guildford and Waverley to agree a statement of common ground, which we see in memorandum of understanding, setting out how they will work together to address any residual unmet need within the housing market area after their local plans are adopted. So this is the idea of everything being pushed down the road.
Right, pausing there and taking that image, the metaphor of the can being kicked down the road, which probably now achieves cliche status. Woking were saying, there is a can, but we can't, or we're not saying how big the can is.
They weren't, no, they weren't suggesting that there was a difference in the arithmetic between the core strategy requirement and the Schmar, which was, of course, a Schmar agreed between the three authorities. What was being suggested, as is perhaps more untypical in these circumstances, is that the authorities would find a way in the future to address this issue of unmet need through the respective iterations of their local plan. So it wasn't a suggestion that it should be dealt with by this examiner.
No, no, sorry, well, let's depart from the image. If you like, the authentic voice of Woking Borough Council on its own areas, unmet housing need, was in the papers you've just shown us.
Yes.
Which do not precisely quantify that unmet housing need, correct?
Correct.
Do acknowledge that there is unmet housing need for the reasons they explained, yes?
Yes.
Seek to dispel the notion that it's likely to be addressed by, if you like, windfalls, brownfield windfalls in Woking, yes?
Yes.
But don't worry, they say, because it can and will be attended to through joint working.
Exactly. And if, my lord, the arithmetic does appear in the statement of common ground, which was signed between the authorities. So if we go back to that, that's SB forty it starts at, and then forty-one is appendix seven. So this was part of a duties to cooperate statement made by Waverley. And then if my lord has page forty-one towards the foot of that page, statement of common ground, Guildford, Waverley and Woking Borough Councils acknowledge the shared responsibility to meet the full OAN within the housing market area as far as consistent with the MPPF. Of the three authorities, Woking Borough Council is the only one with an adopted core strategy, post-dates the publication of the MPPF, two-nine-two is referred to. So this is the common position that all three authorities are taking into the examination, as well as others. Against its objectively assessed housing need of five-seventeen, core strategy adopted on October twenty-twelve has a plan period of twenty-twenty-seventeen, so still current. And then it sets out the different stages the three authorities are at, and the approach that Woking wants to take in relation to its adopted core strategy and moving forward with the development management policies DPD, much as we've seen in their representations. And so it goes on across the page, and this is the point that the inspector didn't accept, and I say it was open to him as a matter of planning judgment not to accept it. Each authority has undertaken a green belt review to assess the potential release of green belt land. All three authorities are seeking to amend green belt boundaries through their respective local plans, as they must do if they're going to make changes. The current evidence base that supports each council's emerging plan demonstrates that neither Guildford nor Waverley Borough Councils will be in a position to accommodate the unmet need arising from Woking. So that was the position that the three authorities carried into the examination. And that was the point that Inspector Ball didn't agree with, and it's absolutely clear from his reasons that he didn't agree with. But as my lord continues to read then that passage, which was drawn to your attention earlier, you'll see the various steps that the authorities were saying they would take in relation to how matters would be developed in the future, after the examination, after the adoption of the Waverley local plan. And it was that approach that the inspector rejected.
Is it just to deliver the terms of rejection just for a moment?
Yes, I will do, almost immediately. Just before I do, just to finish at this point, can we just illustrate the position that CPRE took in relation to the same issue? Because we see the representation that your attention was drawn to earlier, which starts on page two-hundred-and-nine of the supplementary bundle. And, my lord, Lord Justice Limbleham, they've got confirmation that the guts of the criticism made in relation to the approach to unmet need is contained on page two-one-two. But then if we go across to page two-one-four, we see here that the question is, well, what main modifications are you suggesting to the plan if you're saying that main modifications can assist? And the response that's given on behalf of CPRE follows, the housing requirement should be reduced, the extent of Woking's unmet need and the extent to which it, which others, including Waverley, should meet it, should be considered at a review of the Schmar and of the Waverley local plan after the completion of the review of Woking's local plan. And we know what Woking were saying about what they were going to do, that they weren't of a mind to review their local plan. So in terms of the case that the inspector was being asked to consider and deal with, that was the essence of the case that was being put forward. And we can see it, again, clearly set out in the executive summary of the report that sits behind the representation. So that starts on page SB two-one-five, and the executive summary starts on two-one-eight and carries across to two-one-nine. And we can see, first of all, on page two-one-nine, Roman six, the suggestion in the last three lines, the appropriate course of action is to remove the proposed allocation from the housing requirement and remit the matter to an early review of the three plans in the HMA. And of course, it is a possibility for local authorities within an HMA or otherwise to engage in joint planning, but that wasn't the decision that had been made by any of the authorities here. And in relation to the conclusion in point nine, if the possibility that Waverley should contribute to Woking's housing needs is remitted to an early review of the HMA's plans, so across the HMA in other words, and the affordability uplift is scaled back to thirteen percent or fifty homes a year, the housing requirement would be a certain number. So it's all based on the idea that there can be further reviews of the plan process before any determination is made in relation to unmet need. And it's against that backdrop that the inspector considers the issue, as well as having a number of other parties who plainly were suggesting to him that in fact it was important for Waverley to now seek to meet the unmet need in the HMA. And of course, some of the developers, as we know from the representations, were seeking as high as a hundred percent, based on the relative constraints of Waverley compared to Guildford. And so what the inspector said about this is in paragraph twenty-eight, the under-provision exists now. So first of all, that's a conclusion of judgment that was open to him, and in this court and below, no one is saying he couldn't sensibly have reached that judgment. And what follows next is important, bearing in mind the increasing reliance that's placed on the AMR report. The inspector concluded, as a matter of judgment, that the under-provision has been growing from the start of Woking's plan period from twenty-ten. So he looked at the plan period from twenty-ten to the date that he had to decide things, and concluded that that under-provision was growing. It needs to be addressed. So that's his response to the idea that it would be an acceptable policy response to postpone these things for another round of plan making. And having reached that conclusion, he says, it's true that any future review of Woking's local plan will provide an opportunity to re-examine housing opportunities. So that's as clear a reference as you could hope to find, to the idea that there may be further safeguarded land coming forward, or indeed land within the urban area. So it's something that the inspector thought about and had in mind. And just its assessment of unmet need against a new OAN calculation, it's on that basis, having looked at all of the things that I say would be required for there to be a proper OAN calculation, that he exercises the planning judgment, but in these circumstances, his footnote seven, recalculating Woking's OAN in light of the 2014 household projections. So he recognises precisely the exercise that he's being invited to carry out. And he says that in these circumstances, I don't think it's appropriate, it's outside the scope of the examination, the Schmar figure has therefore been referred to, so he's recognising, as it were, arguments had been put against the Schmar figure, and so he has a recognition that lower household projections may result in some reduction to the degree of unmet need. So he's not suggesting, in the absence of further employment information in relation to this OAN calculation that's employment-based, that he is able, as a matter of reasonable judgment, to go further in those circumstances. And if it had been pressed on him that he needed to go further, and of course, it was pressed on him that he needed to go further, and it was pressed on him that he ought to be suspending the plan, but had it been pressed on him, then the logical consequence is, he would have had to have asked Woking to go away and spend money on their consultants' ACON updating the employment analysis. So when one actually puts into concrete terms what a further and detailed investigation of this point would have required, it perhaps becomes easier to see why the inspector proceeded in the way that he did. Because he had a number of other factors that he was entitled to rely upon, and he did, as we go through paragraph twenty-eight. He said, I'm not going to redo the OAN calculation, but it's very clear from Woking Borough Council's evidence to the hearing, so it was also the additional evidence to the hearing, not just what had been said before in writing, and from the very obvious constraints imposed by the ring of green belt around Woking, that there remains a significant delivery shortfall against housing needs in Woking. So that was his judgment on that issue, and that the town will very probably, because of its intrinsic geography, as he just identified, remain unable to accommodate a significant proportion of its OAN in future. So that again was a planning judgment for the inspector to make in the circumstances in which he found himself. And it's not an irrational judgment, and it's not one that lacks reasons. One doesn't need to do much than look at the plans that Mr Parrott has exhibited to understand the essential basis of the logic here. So he carries on, having reached those conclusions about what the situation is in Woking at the moment and what it's likely to be in the future. Now that said, Waverley should not be expected to accommodate the full amount. So he starts with the proposition of... So he starts with the proposition of the one hundred percent, which was being urged upon him by some of the parties subject to what the evidence said. Shouldn't have to meet hundred percent of Woking's unmet need indicated by the Schmar figure. So again, within the analysis, he's tying himself here to the Schmar figures and recognizing that the adjustment that he's about to make is one from the Schmar figures for the reasons that he then goes on to give. And so if we look at the first set of reasons that he gives for not applying a hundred percent of the Schmar figures, they are all related to the criticisms that were made of the Schmar and whether or not it continued to accurately represent the OAN within Woking. And so he acknowledges the twenty fourteen household projections for Woking were lower. So pausing there, he acknowledges that point of fact than those on which the Schmar were based. He also looks at the nature and extent of the changes. Because as he carries on, we see reference to the adjustment being less significant, both in percentage and numerical terms in Waverley. And so he says, the figures suggest that the scale of the under provision could be less than two two five DPA. So on the material that he had, and bearing in mind the way that the working OAN was calculated, he was not persuaded that the figure would definitely be lower than two two five. He was recognizing that it could be less than two two five. He carries on. It's also possible that Woking might be able to deliver more housing than envisaged by its plan because although there's still a running shortfall, and again, no criticism of that, it harks back to the point that the inspector was making at the start of paragraph twenty eight. So there is a continuing issue as far as delivery is concerned. It might be able to deliver more housing, still a running shortfall, but housing delivery in three particular years relate to the AMR years, which were discussed before the examination. And in those three years, it was ahead of its core strategy housing requirement. Now, in terms of the AMRs that were produced, if one were to read those with a planner's eye, one would immediately see that in fact, the vast bulk of the provision, certainly the provision that's above three hundred dwelling per annum, arises from two safeguarded sites that were released from the green belt with a total of about six hundred and fifty units. And in one of the years, I think they brought forward something between hundred and fifty and two hundred, and the other year it was two hundred and fifty.
Is there evidence?
Yes, there is, because we have the AMRs. So shouldn't be approximating. So if we start at two seven five, we can see this is the AMR for twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, produced in December twenty sixteen. And if my lord cast and I down to the table at the foot of page two seven five, safeguarded sites, net additional dwellings, one nine seven of the three sixty became available in that year. And then as you move on through the narrative, you will find the reference to safeguarded sites on page two seven nine at the foot of that page. This is dealing with policy CS ten. And we can see the two sites referred to at foot of that page, Moore Lane, Kingsmore Park. Dates of the grant of planning permission and the size of the two commissions.
Those are the two sites.
They're the two sites. And one can see them repeated again in the later AMR. Sorry.
So safeguarded land was more than half used up.
Indeed. And that chimes immediately in terms of the material that was before the Waverley examiner, with what the Woking examiner had said about even in buoyant times, Woking had been unable to consistently produce more than three hundred units per annum. And so if we look at the twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen AMR, same, very similar table, page two eight eight, safeguarded sites.
Sorry, the one we've just been looking at was two thousand and which year? This was the twenty sixteen?
Yes. Twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, yes, produced in December twenty sixteen. And then we have the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, produced in December twenty seventeen, page two eight eight. Safeguarded sites rounding the numbers slightly, two hundred and fifty of the four hundred, so five eighths for the overs.
So yeah. The increment, the small increment in safeguarded sites. Sorry, the total goes up, and that's because there are dwellings coming forward elsewhere.
Yes. As I say, if one thinks about the safeguarded sites and whether or not that was a source of supply that was likely to continue. Because once you add these figures together, you're getting close to the six hundred and fifty that represented those two sites, that that would continue into the future up to twenty twenty seven.
Right, the total number of safeguarded sites was where?
Well, I'm not sure from these documents that we can get the total number of safeguarded sites within the Woking strategy. We only know where there were net additional dwellings.
Yeah, but the question I asked you earlier on was wrong, wasn't it? I was taking the wrong fraction. We don't have a number of total safeguarded sites. So we don't know what proportion has in fact gone or had in fact gone at that point.
No, not on this material.
So the safeguarded sites were settled in the core strategy. So not an infinite resource, but a finite resource.
Yes, and all I say about that is in terms of what was in front of the examiner, it's consistent with what the Woking examiner himself said, that Woking had not been able to consistently produce more than three hundred units a year, even in times of economic buoyancy. So that was the way that the examiner described it.
Right, so the point, your point you're making is that the inspector's judgment, founding judgment.
Was a reasonable.
Was a reasonable one, act twenty nine, where he's having regard to the AMRs.
Yes, he specifically looked, again, he specifically looked at the things that he was invited to consider. And he addressed them, and he addressed them in a way that is well within the bounds of a reasonable exercise of judgment.
His reference then at the foot of twenty nine on page eleven to housing delivery in those three years.
Yes. It was ahead of the housing requirement, so he recognized that for those three years.
Yeah, that's a reference to the AMRs.
Yes, exactly. And so all of that was in his mind, taken into account. And taken into account in the overall judgment, what we say is a very broad exercise of planning judgment, as to whether or not one to start at a hundred percent of the unmet need or it ought to be some lesser proportion of that. So he took all of those things into account. And then he continued to think about the position of Guildford, which was progressing towards its local plan examination. And the potential, as he noted it, for Guildford to meet a proportion of Woking's unmet need. And he made the point that of course, that would need to be tested through its own local plan examination. So there may be some unfortunate consequences of having three separate examinations, three separate development plans within a housing market area. But there's no doubting that the inspector was correct to say, that in, or certainly it's a fair judgment, that the issue of the proportion that Guildford could provide would be tested through their own local plan examination. And as my lord indicated earlier, it's having thought about all of those matters. He comes to his conclusion, well, should I, should it be a hundred percent? Should it be zero percent? Or should it be a different figure? And he puts all of those things together, exercising a judgment on a number of factors there. And he comes to the conclusion it would be appropriate and reasonable for Waverley to accommodate half the figure that's been met.
Well, half of the figure for unmet need identified through.
Yes.
The Schmar process.
Exactly, so he keeps going back to and recognizing that he's starting with the figures from the Schmar process and recognizing some of the criticisms that have been made of that process.
So you say that my provisional reading of twenty nine was actually right?
Yes. And I say, as the language follows, that is really the only way that that passage can be read. And it makes perfect sense following that section through as a whole. So what that demonstrates is that in circumstances where, as the judge below described, there was plainly, and it will normally be the case, that there is imperfect information in relation to what is happening in a neighboring authority. And it can't sensibly be the case that an inspector is obliged to, in our example, ask Woking to go away and commission further consultants' reports when they don't need to to further their own planning process because they've decided they're taking their site allocations forward. It can't be that that's a requirement of law. Now, if it's not a requirement of law for Woking to do, why should Waverley have to do the work that would ordinarily be Woking's to do through the emerging local plan process? And I do invite my lords to recall firstly that these reports have to be read as a whole. And so it is important to look at where the inspector could reasonably obtain arithmetic precision. That's exactly the exercise that he carried out. But there were some elements of this, whereas the judge below remarked upon, he was in reality conducting a fundamentally different exercise. And insofar as it's suggested that there was a failure to follow guidance, then of course, my lords are fully familiar with the approach in Law Homes to that issue. And it is for the appellant to demonstrate that there is some passage of the reasoning that shows that the inspector must have misunderstood an important point of policy. After that, if he's understood the policy correctly, of course, the application of the policy is a matter for him. And in these circumstances, there is nothing, I say, that demonstrates a failure to follow the national guidance. And just on that issue, can we quickly turn up the guidance behind tab four in the MPPF? And if my lords move to page thirty eight internally of the document, paragraphs one, five, eight and following, using a proportionate evidence base, as the judge below remarked, it's clear that this is the overarching principle, that what's occurring during examination should be the proportionate use of evidence.
Are you exactly where are you?
Sorry, my lord, it's page, it's tab four of the authorities' bundle, the MPPF, page thirty eight internal pagination. And then at the foot of that page, using a proportionate evidence base.
One, five, eight?
Yes. So each local planning authority should ensure the local plan is based on adequate, up to date and relevant evidence about economic, social, environmental characteristics. And in this local plan, as in others, there was an entire library dealing with those issues. One, five, nine is important. Local planning authority should have a clear understanding of housing needs in their area, as my lord pointed out earlier on. Clear reference to their area being that local planning authority. They should prepare a strategic housing market assessment to assess their full housing needs. So again, the reference to there. And of course, that's precisely what was done here. And that's the exercise that the inspector undertook in relation to Waverley. And then if we go forward to tab twenty, the PPG.
Well, just pausing on one, five, nine, I think it may be being submitted on the other side that the collective local planning authority should have a clear understanding of housing needs in their area. Might be construed where appropriate as meaning each local planning authority in a housing market area, which is, which contains several authorities' areas or parts of them, should have a clear understanding of housing needs in the whole housing market area. That I think is being suggested on this.
Yes, but I say, one, that's contrary to the language. And two, that can only be the guidance insofar as to do so would be proportionate. Because the overarching principles which all of this is subject is proportionality. We shouldn't be faced with a situation where local authority inspectors are suspending examinations, making inquiries which no one has asked them to make so that there can be further information obtained. Meanwhile, all of the other authorities like Guildford in this case are moving on with their planning process and so on. So that's how I say one, five, nine ought to be interpreted. And then in relation to the PPG.
Well, sorry, I'm sorry to go on about this. If you come back to forty seven, paragraph forty seven, page twelve, this was also referred to, use their evidence base to ensure that their local plan, singular, meets the full objectively assessed needs for market and affordable housing in the housing market area.
Yes, so so far as consistent with the policy set out in this framework. And of course, that's precisely the exercise that's being undertaken here. That passage is not dealing with the idea about the assembly of the evidence base. Because we know that paragraph one, five, eight is dealing expressly with the idea of the evidence base because of the subheading there. And the subheading is using a proportionate evidence base.
Yeah, I mean, nobody actually submits that the language of the MPPF is infelicitous. That seems to be a submission too far for anybody.
I say, there's nothing that demonstrates a misunderstanding by the examiner of any of these provisions. And that is enough to say that there is no error of law. And then in relation to the PPG, which we have behind tab twenty, the starting points and the methodology are discussed again. The pagination is at the bottom right corner, five of seventeen, assessing housing need. And of course, the first point that arises from this is that no one below or in this court is suggesting that the approach that the consultants took in relation to the employment led projections for both Woking and Guildford were somehow necessarily inconsistent with this guidance. An employment led approach can be consistent with this guidance. And it's what happened to two of the authorities within this HMA. And so that needs to be borne in mind when looking at how the inspector approached it. And then on page six of seventeen, second subheading, how often are the projections updated? That second paragraph there, wherever possible, local needs assessment should be informed by the latest available information. Now pausing there, the Schmar was drawn against the then most up to date information. But all that happened was that between the time of the production of that evidence and the examination, the new projections were produced. But they also informed the examination. We know that because we've just seen how the inspector looked at them and took them into account. The MPPF is clear that local plan to be kept up to date. Meaningful change in the housing situation should be considered in this context. But that does not automatically mean that housing assessments are rendered outdated every time new projections are issued. And of course, the inspector was in a position to make a determination in relation to whether or not there was a meaningful change for Waverley, and he did. But what he didn't have was any of the information that's referred to in the Dartford case, that's referred to in the Shropshire case, and that Mr Parrott has referred to, which would have enabled him to bottom out the situation in relation to Woking. And those being the circumstances, and no one else saying he should go away and obtain this evidence, or that Woking should. We submit there is no error of law in the approach that was taken here.
To bottom out the OAN for Woking?
Yes. Because one of the difficulties with the submission the appellant's make is that Mr Stinchcombe says, well, it should be done. is that Mr Stinchcombe says, well, it should be done with some degree of precision. It should be better in some respects. In the skeleton argument, the references to taking on board at least the AMRs. Now, we can demonstrate that the AMRs in fact were taken into account and bearing in mind what the Woking examiner said, they may not be thought to be terribly persuasive in terms of what the likely distribution of housing provision would be over time. So beyond that, where is, if my lords are being called on to answer this point and to say there's an error of law here, where is the point at which this inspector, this authority, was bound to go if it was something short of a full assessment of Woking's OAN? Because the only way to have done that exercise properly would have been to have followed the guidance in Dartford, in Shropshire, and taken the steps that Mr Parrott has identified. The answer, of course, is that if there's no obligation to do that exercise, and I say there is not, then how you weigh all of that evidence together is a matter of planning judgment for the inspector. And so we say, in the particular circumstance of this case, that this is not a proper application of the Tameside principle. It's not a circumstance where there was a legal obligation on the inspector to either invite additional representations, to require a participant to the examination to go and do additional professional work, or to suspend the examination. There were representations from all of the parties who were interested in these issues. And they had opportunities from the very earliest to address their minds to this. The judge below and Mr Parrott set out the chronology, wherein the initial questions, these matters were raised for consideration. And one can see how parties chose to address it through the chronology. We've seen what CPRE did as a matter of their particular approach. So there is no Tameside point, we say, here. And there is a very real difference to the process that is involved in preparing the emerging local plan. So just to skip through the various stages that the court will be familiar with. So the Regulation eighteen, putting forward of proposals, will then go into ultimately Regulation ninety, version of the plan that is submitted for examination. There's the examination process itself. In this case, and as my Lord, Lord Justice Limbleham will know, there is non-statutory guidance contained in a book called The Yellow Book, which sets out how inspectors will typically approach these kinds of examinations. There's no suggestion of anything that was done that was in any way not consistent with that. We have the initial questions, the matters and issues put together by the inspector, the hearing process, and then made modifications. This was a process which provided very full opportunities for those who wanted to address these points to do so. And we've seen the extent to which they were addressed. And my last point is just about the context of local plan examinations compared to, for example, a section seventy-eight appeal. And as I suggested earlier, the participants to a plan will be those who object to it, not those who support it, together with those who are local authorities who are there as statutory consultees or because they are engaged by the duty to cooperate. There will often be several thousand, this is going to the duty to give reasons. So there will often be several thousand objections to a plan. And it's not unusual for there to be more than ten thousand. And as I ventilated in my Lord, Lord Justice Limbleham earlier, of course, there may be more than three authorities in an HMA, one authority may be in a number of HMA's. And so if an important part of the appellant's case is to say, well, it's not just the OAN, in fact, you've got to look at the supply side as well, then all of a sudden, for all of those other authorities, one has to look at issues relating to, for example, employment, housing, potentially the green belt, three green belt authorities here, and other constraints in circumstances where the three authorities may be at very different stages of the evolution of their local plans. And the necessary corollary of that is that their respective evidence bases will be at different states of generation as well. And so that broader context that we say serves to emphasise the nature and breadth of the planning judgements that examining inspectors have to make in relation to some of the issues that are before them. And this issue of unmet need was, I would say, a paradigm example of the broad exercise of planning judgement for all of those reasons. My lords, may I just have a moment? My lords, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much. Yes.
My lord, I'll be brief. I think the issue between us can be paragrapized by the question my Lord, Lord Justice Limbleham put as to what the inspector is required to do. Is he under an obligation to consider, to conclude on the objectively assessed need in looking at this unmet need question? Now, of course, there's two sides to that, there's the need and supply. In my submission, and for the reasons given by the second appellant as well, when one looks at the policy context here, the expectation that local planning authorities, so therefore inspectors who will be looking at local plans prepared by local planning authorities, to consider the objectively assessed needs is the same regardless of where the need comes from. And as I submitted already, in principle, there's good sense in that. The question then is, how is that obligation fulfilled? And I don't submit, my lords, that it's an absolute obligation. But it's an obligation that requires some reasons if an inspector is not going to engage properly with the unmet need, that's the objectively assessed need part and the supply part. Before, and it's important to remember in this case, before it was the inspector who proposed the modification to add the Woking allocation to Waverley. So it's a positive consequence of the modification that he made. And in terms of the reasons here, we mercifully, in a way, have quite a short passage in which to look at. We've been to it a few times on SB eleven and twelve. But one can see in my submission pretty clearly in footnote seven, what the inspector said he was doing and what he was not doing. He was not attempting, in my submission, in any way to recalculate the objectively assessed need. He says clearly, outside the scope of this. And in my submission, it's not right that the objectively assessed need and the supply part, in a way, the corollary, are not part of what should be before a local plan inquiry. When you're looking at housing market area needs, appreciate in housing market areas, there'll be different circumstances. Maybe it's sensible for them to align their plans, maybe it's more difficult some places than others. But those are matters that may justify different approaches. They don't justify not doing the exercise by because this is outside my role. And those different approaches might be, as I submitted already, seeking more information, and that's supported in my submission quite clearly by the Planning Practice Guidance on Local Plans, might be building in some review mechanism into the plan. But not as here, taking a fifty per cent of, in my submission, a number that is plainly bad and imposing it for the nineteen-year period of the plan. In terms of proportionality, there's nothing disproportionate, I say, about doing this exercise, given that this is a housing requirement that's being imposed in an area. If it's done for some housing need, why should it not be done for other housing need? And as I say, there may be practical considerations, but that's not what the inspector did. My learned friend refers to Woking at some length in certain instances in Woking. In so far as one can look into the AMRs and look at safeguarded sites, all we know is the inspector, the only thing he did on supply was to cast his eye on the AMRs. The most recent one's December twenty seventeen, so that was after representations had been made, it was published after. So he had those before him. He didn't ask any of the parties about the supply side. He didn't refer to safeguarded sites in his reasoning. What we do know is that not just for those years, but for the five years following, because it's a five-year housing land supply, there was a very substantial supply, at least much larger than one might think if one sees how the inspector has... Well, I mean, I'll go further, he just didn't inform the underlying number. He didn't attempt to do that exercise. Similarly, the employment-led argument, one finds no reference to that in the inspector's reasoning. He's acknowledging material differences in demographic numbers by, as Mr Stinchcombe has taken your lordships to the PPG, where demographics is the starting point. Endorse that. But with respect, my learned friend, a lot of this is post-factor rationalisation where one does not have that reasoning in the inspector's word, in the inspector's report. In terms of the twenty-twelve Examination Core Strategy, this was interesting in a way because it was very soon, the submission was before the NPPF document came out. And the inspector's report, which, I think, my lords, just turn back to page two, three, seven. Inspector's report starts on the F two, three, seven. And you can see the date is twenty-sixth of July twenty twelve. So that's one point about it, but it's relying on the, what the McDonald Report said and correctly said, it's not contradictory here, was the South East Plan figure of two, nine, two. One can see that in this report at paragraph seventy-five, page two, five, five. Page seventy-five. And importantly, in so far as this just post-MPPF report is endorsing that, it's doing it with, in my submission, a clear degree of reluctance as to housing delivery. And there's two references for your lordships there. The first one, my learned friend went to, but he didn't go to the bottom of the paragraph, it's paragraph eighty-three, two, five, six to two, five, seven. I won't read it out, but the last sentence is important on what runs up, the build-up to that. Page eighty-three. And the second one is over the page, page two, five, eight, paragraph ninety-one. There, the inspector's emphasizing the theme really of this discussion, that the council is potential to exceed this minimum. So even on that basis, going back twenty twelve, that different world, that inspector was recognising that the supply should be higher than the two, nine, two. Our inspector, despite apparently common sense of this report, doesn't ask the question about what the supply is, refers to the AMRs, but in my submission, doesn't do what he's required to do and to factor that in to some kind of analysis about the unmet need. My lords, I'll see if there's anything else I wanted to address. Your lordships on. Unless there's any questions?
Do you want to say anything about the form of relief?
No, thank you for reminding me. That was, I was going to start with it so I didn't forget. And I did over lunch type something up, which I have shared with my learned friends on both sides. But it may be helpful for the court to look at this, but I wouldn't want to endorse it as any kind of final form. This really flows, my lord, from the breadth of the powers in section one, one, three, seven, one, one, three, seven, A, et cetera, particularly one, one, three, seven, B, which relates to directions. And I think I had thought that to deal with this error, we're talking essentially about eighty-three dwellings per annum, I'll come to this, but I had thought to deal with this error, that one way that one might do it, my lord, is to quash the eighty-three, to leave the rest of the number intact, but to quash the eighty-three. But I can see some advantages in a direction. If I give your lordships a moment to read through that. My lord, just to say a little word about it, it may help, we haven't actually turned up the relevant policy yet. It's in the bundle of page ninety-one, SB ninety-one. And it's this policy, it's contentious because it makes provision for the enhanced number of eleven, two, one, oh. So that's where I get the maths ready for this from. If one removes one, five, seven, seven, that's the Woking requirement from eleven, two, one, oh. One gets nine, six, three, seven, I think, I'm sure this could all be double-checked. And that's over the period. The, a difficulty, although my submission not an insuperable one, is how reducing the number from, if I do it in dwellings per annum, from five hundred and ninety dwellings per annum to five hundred and seven dwellings per annum would affect the allocation across the settlements. Wouldn't, I don't think there's any problem with the bottom paragraph. And that's a difficulty because I don't think, certainly we as a claimant, wouldn't be able to suggest that allocation. But this is why, in my submission, it's almost unavoidable to have one C. So the actual allocations are treated as not having been made, although it's understood that the overall number is only marginally lower.
These are all cumulative, are they?
If one adds all of that up, one gets to the overall figure. I say that not having done it, but I'm certain that that is the case.
That all adds up to eleven, two, two, one, oh?
Yeah, that's an understanding. And for that, one has to take into account the additional windfall dwellings and the other dwellings that are of outstanding permission.
Well, the effect of your one C would be that the firm's housing provision goes.
Well, this is where, an alternative is to leave those numbers, but the difficulty with that is that each number would need to be reconsidered. Not hugely, it's going to be the same sort of order, twenty, fifteen, twenty per cent of each number. And how the reduction should be allocated among the sites is something that my submission is better to be reconsidered by the respondent authority.
At least the authority without development plan with housing numbers in it?
It leaves the authority with an overall housing number.
I'm sorry, without housing allocations in it?
It leaves it without that being shared out. And one option, which I think we would not be averse to, would be simply to trim down each one proportionately for the time being. But I can see problems with that. It's, but that would be one option. Clearly, the court is astute to, or should be astute, to correct the legal error and tailor the remedy to it, as my Lord, Lord Justice Limbleham said in the Woodfield case. to correct the legal error and tailor the remedy to it, as my old Lord Justice Limblon said in the Woodfield case. And we don't seek any more than that. We don't, we don't through these proceedings seek to knock out all housing in in Waverley. It's this, it's this, what we say is unjustified extra that should be remedied. On one view, my lord, one would understand that the overall provision is still relatively large, and that that would be allocated across the site. One would hope that the respondent would act fairly quickly to provide a reallocation on a proper basis.
Yeah, all right. Well, look, I'm anxious that we should give Mr Stinchcombe an opportunity to say something.
Just just a few words if I may, my lord. A- and if I can perhaps just address you on-
Just just before you start. I mean, it, I mean, I think it's been useful to 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 have a sort of canter through this at the moment. But I I s- I don't think any of us should regard this as the last word. If you succeed in your appeal, well, then this will become a real issue again at that stage, and we'll obviously have to deal with it by way of written submissions in the usual way. All right, thank you.
In 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 indeed, my lord, I was I was about to say something very similar to that. But because, of course, one option would be not to wash anything, but to remit it back with a direction that, insofar as it has an uplift of eighty-three dwellings per annum, it shouldn't be treated as approved and adopted, and further directions for that to be reconsidered. So there are more than one ways to, more than one way to address the 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 issue if we get to that stage. My lords, I I don't want to take very much time at all at at this late hour. I I wanted to identify an answer, if I suggest an answer, see if I may, three short points of fundamental order which these appeals give rise. The the first is this, to what extent and how do the judgments in cases such as Jolston and Hallam read across from planning applications and planning appeals into plan making? We say they do read across, you have to grapple with the numbers, but with more exactitude for the reasons given in Hunston, in Shropshire and those cases. And I needn't elaborate upon that, but that's the first question. Second question is this, to to what extent and how does the investigative public law duty talk of in Tameside, the seminal case of Tameside, engage with local planning examinations? And we say rather fully, for the reasons, again, I have explored. And and the third is this, to to what extent does the duty to decide things consistently, as held in seminal cases such as North North Wilkshire, again engage in local planning examinations, where you're looking at an assessment of objectively assessed needs for for two boroughs in the same HMA? And we say it engages fully, again, for the reasons I've identified. And and having heard the submissions of my learned friend for for the local planning authority, he does accept that that assessing the the housing need for Woking is part and parcel of the process that was before this inspector. And he points out, and one can readily see why, that that inspector might have a a complete or relatively complete information regarding the housing needs of Waverley, but the inference being a less complete understanding of the housing needs of Woking, we can understand that as well. But from that, one cannot take the leap that one is entitled to assess the housing needs of Woking on an imperfectly forced and inconsistent basis, because we've know that we've got the starting point wrong. We know that we're not looking at the actual housing supply, and we know that he's not engaged, because he doesn't think he should do, with potential other housing supply sites such as Martyrs Lane. And that amounts to not looking at a potential difference of two thousand four hundred plus homes. And it amounts to adopting a completely inconsistent approach as regards Woking and Waverley. And it amounts to not looking at the best and most up-to-date information available, which is a breach of the PPG. And all of that in a constrained borough where these numbers really matter, because ninety-two percent of the land is countryside, three-quarters of that countryside is AOMB or Great Landscap Value, and sixty percent is greenbelt. And so for those reasons, and whichever remedy we ultimately discuss, targeted at that eighty-three dwelling per annum uplift, in my respectful submission, this court should exercise its discretion to find that remedy. Pleasure.
Right. Well, we are, of course, grateful to all and those who've helped you with your submissions to take time to consider our judgments.